Morning, everybody. We start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, so Allison.
Oh, mine was fine.
How Korean you?
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, what which is stands on one nation under God, individual, liquidity, and debt to us for all.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockham County Commissioners Meeting of June sixth, twenty twenty two. In the room, we have Allison Kroski, and we have Commissioner Coyle, Commissioner Goddoo.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chuck, myself, and we've got Zoom, we've got Jude Gates, we've got the Sheriff Catherine Mann, and is that Superintendent Henry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take my eyes again, gutter. Then we have Jason Smith.
Caring.
And Elaine, and then I don't know who's in that, who's in that bottom box on the left.
Brian Oles.
Okay. Must be somebody that.
For one of the openings.
Yeah.
Commissioner Cherichello, we're sharing office space today and electricity and everything, so we're saving the county money.
All right, I'm more and more impressed you guys are working as a team.
And Zoom, and Zoom time, too.
Thank you.
Licenses.
All right, we're gonna do RFP openings for municipal buildings, furniture, and artwork.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a special on the motion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
I vote yes.
We have a physical opening today. We're done, we're done.
Very good.
Thank you.
Uh, work as compensation, third-party administration.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Human Resources to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
I vote yes. Award.
I know, we have.
Commissioner Coyle, very busy this morning.
Yeah, like, it's like Christmas. There's well.
Oh, that's like, like a tieback on the.
Thank you.
Awards for the engineering services for wastewater treatment facility targeted repairs and improvements.
I move to award the proposal for engineering services for wastewater treatment facility to Cofflin Environmental Services LLC for an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item?
Uh, just that this is part of the ARPA project, and although we did not get, this was a, the only bid we got. It looks like what, there's been a lot of work with Cofflin, and so they're really well-equipped to conduct this work, and I'm happy that we have this lined up.
Yeah. Very good. On the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Award for the Rockin Cooler Door Replacements.
I move to award the proposal for the walk-in cooler door replacement to Dowling Corporation for an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Mission, okay, no discussion. Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
I vote yes. Award for the water tower inspection facilities operation.
I move to award the proposal for the water tower inspection to Aquius Infrastructure Management for an amount not to exceed four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
Just that we haven't had this since two thousand eighteen was the last time we had the inspection, so it's good that we're lining this up. Falls right in line with budgeting and we have money to put.
On the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, WWTP paving driveway repair.
I move to award the proposal for wastewater treatment facility paving driveway repaired to Rome Construction Incorporated for an amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Jude, is this just as a result of trying, of trying to, you know, from work that was done, we have to, where we trenched out, or?
Actually, no, it's, it's been deteriorating for a while, and it got to the point where we either had to put it in as a big project for next year, or take this chunk off now, and it's, it makes sense, because I think the next thing we have to do with the jail is gonna be more like a crack ceiling and striping kind of job instead of paving.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
If not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
And I vote yes. We are on to consent agenda.
Uh, with respect to the minutes, I move to approve the May second, twenty twenty-four public hearing minutes, the May sixteenth public meeting minutes, and the May twenty-third non-public meeting minutes.
Second.
Uh, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Discussion.
Oh, you want discussion? Go ahead.
Well, just, I was just gonna say that, thank you, Leila, there's been a lot of minutes to do, because we've had a lot of meetings and non-public, so thank you for your efforts. Um, everything to me looked good, I just.
Yeah, they look good. Long meetings.
Yeah.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, in the package, we have the bi-weekly recruitment report. Um, I don't know if anyone wants to chime in on that.
I do. Uh, I would like to, I was just gonna ask about how the infection prevention clinical educator's position. It looks like there were two application interviews, and one was canceled. Um, where are things? How are applications?
Actually, we're good to do an offer. I'll talk in on public.
Okay. But that's moving.
Yep, I think.
Okay. And it looks like we're, you know, with respect to, I mean, we're getting, I think, an increase, what we're not, I'm noticing is a little bit of increase in applications. And we're trending, dare to say we're trending up just a hair.
It is, we're starting to level off now, because we're going into the warmer summer months, we're getting out, and so I think we're gonna see a decrease in some activity, that's what Autumn's reporting to me.
Yeah.
So, um, just in regular stuff. But she calls this dry, dry.
Further discussion? You have any, Commissioner Goddoo?
No.
No, okay. I just wanna, I noticed that we've got one of the Weekender LNA, which is the pressing issue, we all know. Get pick up the pressure on the LNA's for the next year, so the goal was, I believe, I believe it was seventeen that we mentioned that we were trying to get. So, um, is that one of this, this weekend, or will be one of the seventeen?
We could, but we have not agreed to the MOU at this time, but we.
Okay, all right. So we're just starting, so hopefully we, we trend up on that.
I'm gonna try to say yes.
Okay, and then.
Obviously optimistic.
We got the HR agency travel report, informational, I don't know, did you wanna say anything else on that at all?
I'm just having, Autumn is tracking that, um, to just kinda see how we're trending, what we're doing, um, what kind of positions they are, who we're using the most of, a lot of that has to do with, uh, the contractual contracts and the cost, being mindful of the cost related to that. Um, she has been working with Michelle, uh, Jason on the other side of the house as far as, um, you know, we, we kind of level loaded some of those down, and now we're ramping back up, because we have a lot of contracts that have come to an end, but we do still have to refill some of those contracts in order for us to be able to provide services. So she is working pretty closely with Michelle on this, and will continue to do so, but she's pretty busy right now, because she's ramping up to get those people in for most that I'm not returning or not re-remitting to the contracts.
Okay.
And we do have a, um, we have a renewal of a contract note, um, on our agenda today. One thing I noticed is that the rate was at, there was a reduction in rate, and I think it's interesting.
That's a good sign.
What is that? Why is that, I guess? I mean, we can talk about it later with the contract, but.
I think Jason wants to chime in, if he's got any idea.
Yes, thank you. Um, so we have been, um, working with the agencies, all of them, to try to reduce rates. Um, and so we've been negotiating, um, on staffing ratios, you bring us more staff, we're negotiating rates, I guess you could say, a little bit better. But overall, um, that's one caveat. The other one is that there has been, I would say, a shift in recruitment for the agencies, where, um, things are starting to shift in the climate of, of temp staff recruitment. So I think we're seeing, um, more competition and willingness for the agencies to negotiate rates.
You gotta love the free market. Um, one of the other things I just wanna bring up, I had heard from a couple of other counties that they actually RFP some of these, uh, contracts that to help drive some costs down, I don't know if we've ever considered that, but something that we may want to consider.
Okay.
But, uh, all right, uh, let's, any, anything else on this one? In this topic?
No, good.
Surplus equipment request, uh, the long-term.
I move to approve a surplus equipment request pursuant to New Hampshire RSA twenty-eight-eight A, and declare roughly a hundred mattresses and a few various bed parts from long-term care services surplus with items to be properly disposed of.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this self-explanatory, really?
Just that we replace.
Up with the old and with the.
Yes, precisely. Well stated.
On the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, on to payroll.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-two, two dollars and sixty-two cents for the period ending June first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
I just, um.
I'm, I'm sorry.
We're, we're a little higher than, um, two weeks ago, not significantly, I mean, to the tune, I guess it's like nine, uh, nine thousand dollars. But, um, how have we, I guess my question is, have we been doing a good, we've been making a end-of-the-year effort, and maybe this should be more directed to Jason and then you Chuck, is, is, um, reducing the amount of, um, contracted nursing, I mean, trying to get to the finish line. I know, um, we are being so over budget in, um, for staffing line. And, um, how, there's been a lot of effort, obviously, to make some savings. How has the last period been relative to that, Jason?
Uh, yes, as of seventy-six active agency, um, so from April seventeenth, that was at a hundred and seven. So we've definitely decreased the number of, um, agency staff that we're using. Um, in addition to that, since April, we're, and nursing is managing time on an everyday basis, so not filling in open positions, or if there's a call-out. So we've cut, um, close to over seventeen hundred hours, and just from doing that, um, alone, I'd, you know, and just looking at the agency prices, um, it's about a savings of, uh, over a hundred and twenty thousand.
So we're down thirty agency. Were we running to, like, a little inefficiently, or, you know, because it's, it's a pretty significant, we're down like a third, right? Or close to thirty percent?
Some, some of them will, some of these individuals, because their contract ended, they will need to be replaced, as Allison was mentioning, but we also closed the unit down. So that, that contributed to that as well.
Further discussion on that? All right, so, I'm sorry, we're, we're on motion.
We're just paying rocks.
Yeah. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Yes. All right, any, uh, official update from anybody?
Uh, well, I can speak to the execu, the executive committee, uh, approved the budget last night, um, just for anyone in Zoom land. And so there's a recommendation to the full delegation, and that will be happening, that meeting's happening later this month, so that's good, everything's moving along. Um, I just wanted to, I walked in this morning, and the peonies in the front are beautifully in bloom. Um, it gives a really nice, and I guess this is the time of year, I mean, always, because the facilities are always kept so well. But when you see all the work of, you know, how beautiful the landscaping is, and how much effort goes into it, it really gives a, a really nice impression for both the residents and their families, and, um, thank you, Jude, to you and your team for all their, all the efforts to make everything feel so warm and welcoming.
I don't have anything.
I don't need that. So I'm gonna move on to bid waiver requests for Honeywell.
I move to approve the Honeywell Incorporated proposal and bid waiver request in the amount of forty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and one cents for virtual server upgrade and deployment, as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item?
Just that the bid waiver is tied to proprietary, that's what we're using.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's just good to explain it for Zoom land.
On the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you.
Uh, line item transfer.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of fifty-seven thousand dollars, dated June third, twenty twenty-four, transferring from life enrichment staff to assisted living services contract as, uh, recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Need a second?
Second.
Been made and seconded. Any discussion on this one?
Do we think this will get us to the mission?
Yeah, so this is like one of those, like, good news transfers, that if health, health pro heritage does more med B services, we get revenue, but also anticipated expense in the service contract line, so.
Any more discussion? If not, I'll take the, I'll take the vote. Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, the next li, uh, line item transfer.
I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, dated June third, twenty twenty-four, transferring from many staff lines to nursing staff, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Uh, this should be the last.
Okay.
One.
To get us.
Yes.
Get us through.
Oh, we only have a couple of weeks.
I know.
Well, I mean, this is just a thank you to every other, you know, all the department heads that were willing to contribute to get to this place, and that's like, really a lot of help to help long-term care. So, um, thank you, Chuck, for your deep dive into searching high and low, and thank you for the department heads for, um, for the effort and help that you, everybody gave.
Yeah, they were all very crazy and.
Everybody.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I know, and it's like, we, you know, to dig out of.
It's a great group, everyone's.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Um, next one.
Uh, I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of twelve thousand dollars, dated June third, twenty twenty-four, transferring from assisted living meals to dietary service contracts, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded.
Just from updated analysis, seems like we're still running a little bit hotter than normal, even after the transfer we done ways back. So this should hopefully fill in the gaps, so that we don't end up being overspent by five thousand and one, hopefully not overspent at all in dietary service contracts.
Great.
On the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. D, line item transfer.
Nah, can't wait till fly, I'm gonna stop these line item transfers. I, yeah, I move to approve a line item transfer request in the amount of ten thousand dollars, dated June third, twenty twenty-four, transferring from life, life enrichment staff to nursing home adult medical daycare service contracts, as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
This was anticipated, it looks like we have thirteen thousand dollars for the month left in the, um, we're spending about ten thousand a month, maybe a little higher, is that, we have thirteen thousand left for May. Um, hopefully this ten thousand will get us through June. We do.
Yeah, 'cause instead of the two thousand overspent at the end of the year.
Yeah.
Like, what I quickly came up with was, is like forty-five or five thousand, and then the additional amount can help out in case there's other requests. And it looks like there's a couple on here.
Yeah.
So this should hopefully get us through the last two months.
I.
As well.
So I have a question. Will this transfer cover these additional requests?
They should, because we're down to only two months now. I, I, from what I heard, one of them is a retro one, um, that difference between what the ten dollars, one of the fifteen. But yes, it should.
If we approve the next two.
Yes, it should.
Then we'll have enough money in that account.
Be good.
Okay.
And the reason why the grant isn't covering it is that because the approved grant budget by DHHS did not include, um, additional funds for services being provided. That starts in July.
Be new.
Yeah. So, so basically, additional stuff might be able to be somewhat supported by the grant into the next year, but not for this fiscal year.
Okay.
But the nice thing is, I mean, I feel like all along the way, we've been monitoring it to make sure if we're over, it wasn't gonna be substantially. What I, what I see is, as of the end of April, we had a remaining funds of thirteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. In the month of April, we spent ninety-four hundred, so even with the two, a little more, we should, yeah.
Okay. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care, adult medical daycare.
No, great, great segue. Thank you, Leila. I have, I move to, um, sorry, just, oh, my, uh, yes, thank you. I move to up there in adult medical daycare grant dated May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, to Silverthorn for an additional client FC at an amount of twenty-five dollars per day, for five days per week.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, no discussion doing?
I could just.
Okay, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
I vote yes. Next one.
I move to approve the increased Medicaid rate for two established Silverthorn Adult Medical Daycare clients KS for three days per week and HP for two days a week.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. On the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Yes, okay. We're on to primetime healthcare revised.
I move to approve the primetime healthcare LLC revised client services agreement for the period ending June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, until the end of the month after the first anniversary of the effective date, and shall renew for successive one-year terms, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Okay. Second. Has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just always have questions about where we landed on the Primex, uh, recommendations. I was, maybe I missed it.
Chuck, you have any idea?
I think so. Jason?
Yeah, Jason.
Elaine's worked on the contract, and that's why I invited her.
Oh, excellent.
Hi, so I've been working with, uh, Jason Gregoire on this, and in regards to the indemnification, um, they agreed to do mutual, great, mutual indemnification, or at, at first, they did not have that on the contract. They have ex-excluded, um, no, section number nine, which is what we've asked, what Primex asked them to do, so they accepted that. Uh, the governing law, they added New Hampshire, but they also kept Nebraska, so that was the only thing that is a little bit different. Um, and then. In the, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, and, and in the past, when I talked with, um, Jason, he said that we can always, if we are the ones that are pursuing this in the court, it would start here in New Hampshire and cover under New Hampshire law. He had said that in a previous, so again, I didn't go to him for that. I've just kind of fallen back on responses that he's had for other contracts, because the same issues seem to come up in each contract that Primex, um, points out to us that they recommend local counsel to talk to, you know, in regards. Um, I think that was all, right? Those are the only items.
Good, would they strike the jury trial, uh, waving rights to jury trial?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so it sounds like we're all set. So I had a motion on the floor, on the motion, Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, we're on to career staff, unlimited staffing service.
I move to approve the career staff unlimited staff, staffing services agreement addendum beginning June third, twenty twenty-four, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, discussion on this one?
Uh, this was just the reduction that we were talking about in the rate that was further associated, so.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
I vote yes. Bid waiver request, uh, Central Square Technology.
I move to approve the Central Square Technologies proposal and bid waiver request in the amount of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars for the renewal of annual support fees for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as recommended by the High Chair.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this?
Just briefly, I mean, obviously, this is sole source, because this is the platform that, um, is used with the Sheriff's Department, and many of the towns have signed on for that use, uh, dispatch services. How's, uh, how is the new platform?
Yeah, it's coming along. We actually got our, uh, go-live date, uh, will be mid-December, uh, and where Central Square is the, uh, parent company for essentially our current product and future product. Uh, any credit related to, um, wherever we break off in this particular, um, invoice, will get carried over to the new contract.
And at the, uh, at the last chief's meeting, uh, we brought Captain Walsh just to talk, to make sure that all the other towns that are with us understand what we're doing and how, how the progress is going, and actually, it's going very well, so hopefully keep our fingers crossed we can get this done, so, thank you.
Takes a long time to implement these things.
No, it's just, it's just so, everything is so complicated, plus it's a brand-new system, to try to get the dispatches and, you know, plus, you know, all the new people that we're hiring, and it's, but it's working out very well, and dispatch is taking, they're, they're, they're very open-minded about it, and they're really doing a great job, whether they get this up and going. If, if I could speak to, so we're just, we're sitting in Central Square right after these guys. Um, we are moving along in that project. Uh, Caro, uh, Carroll County just, uh, opened up their Central Square and are using it, they really do like it on their JMS system and everything else. Uh, so that, in the future budgets, we'll, we also will have a, an annual fee come down the road after it's all implemented and stuff, but, um, looking forward to having it up and running. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
On the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddoo.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now that takes us to the common head updates. I'm gonna go Jason Smith first.
Good morning. Um, we're just in survey preparedness mode here, so we're, uh, feeling very comfortable with getting everything ready, and just waiting for the state to arrive at this point. Um, FSA Compliance Group is here to conduct a Medicare Part A audit, uh, in our billing practices, they're exiting today, and today will be the exit for their reviews. Thus so far, everything's been, um, fine, no, no major red flags, a couple of recommendations, but it was just, um, all paper compliance, and overall, everything's, it looks, looking great. Um, we have a raffle going on for the Walk to In Alzheimer's, um, which is out front at the main entry, so anyone is welcome to participate in that. Um, and that's pretty much it, just been survey preparedness mode for me.
All right, thanks, Jason. Gonna go to Sheriff Stamos.
Good morning. So, um, you know, we, we all went to the, to the meeting last night, and, uh, the budget looked phenomenal, so, um, it's the good work of Rockham County, how we all get together as a team, and we try to get this stuff done, so I know the sheriff's office appreciates it. Um, on another note, I think, and I'm not gonna jinx it, but I, we have two conditional offers out, we have another, we just gave another conditional offer for a dispatch. So if everything goes right, we'll be fully staffed.
On dispatch, that's great.
And we're looking at, we're looking at some more progressive ways, uh, we're looking at the, the part-time people that work here. I mean, we're looking at, if, you know, if they're not gonna work part-time, then it's time to get rid of them and try to find some part-timers. That way, down the road, we can actually save money on overtime and stuff like that, but it's looking good, and the people that we're hiring over dispatch are phenomenal. They're picking it right up, so it's working out very well.
That's great.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that, and that's it? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You can.
Yeah, thank you.
I was just saying that dispatch is challenging to, um, I mean, it's been, staffing has been challenging there, not just with the shirt, like, universally across police departments widely, so that's great.
Well, we're, we're very fortunate in Rockham County, and I think the word is out that people wanna come to work for us, because of how Rockham County does their business. I mean, it's, it's a family organized business. I mean, I can't say, you know, how pleased I am with, with the board, or, I mean, with the commissioners, with, with all the staff that works here. We all work together as a team. Uh, I did go over to the building the other day, and, uh, I did take some pictures, and I brought the pictures over to the dispatch to show them what their new operations, and the, the first thing out of their mouths were, are we getting windows? I go, yes, I promise you windows, you guys can have windows, but we're gonna have to order some segways, because that building is so big. It's like, we're almost getting lost in it, but I tell you, Harvey Construction is doing such a great job over there, and it was nice to go over there, just look at that building. Even that ninety-day transitional housing, it's phenomenal, you know, so it's, it's, we're getting there.
So exciting.
Yeah.
It, it, honestly, I mean, I was like smiling, I mean, I came back to the office, and I went into the dispatch, because that dispatcher, you've all seen that office, it's terrible, you know what I mean? And I tell you, it's gonna be, it's, it's phenomenal, so.
Maybe instead of segways, maybe instead of segways, we should get a couple of golf carts.
Well, I'm, back in the old days.
Get a bomb.
We got lots of the solar panels, and that's way up there.
Back, back in the old days, Doble Chevrolet was, they're the largest pot distributor in New England. And their warehouse is up in Manchester, and everybody wore roller skates to go get the pods. I'm too old to do roller skates, but, but if somebody else was aware of, that's fine with me, so.
I was gonna say, Sheriff, you put roller skates on, I'm taking photos.
But we're, aren't sure.
Roller skates and convoy hats, it's. Roller skates and cowboy hats, that's all I hear. Yeah, that's what Rocky Hill County Sheriff. Be down for roller skates and cowboy hats.
Let's go to Superintendent Henry.
Uh, he's not gonna wear a cowboy hat though.
Try to try to talk that one. Talk that one, Jason.
Um, let's see, uh, we're at one fifty one in-house. Um, with the weather yesterday, we had uh power outage a couple of times, so we're have some systems down or running on some keys. Um, but uh we're working our way through that. Um, Jude's aware, um, so we'll we'll get through that today. Uh, yesterday, also, we did a tour um of the facility, myself, uh Major Vanville, Mary Beth in the um in our program department, Jude and then Kevin Warwick, who helped us consult on that building, came up and and we were all very impressed of how it looked and how it's coming along. It's um, it's much bigger than we thought, but it's gonna be fantastic. And beyond that, I also have um inspections due on the jail uh sometime this month. So uh roll the dice, who wants to come over? Uh, just let me know.
Do you want, do one of you guys wanna do it? I mean, I I'm happy to do it.
I would do it.
Done a lot.
And I would like to do it.
Okay, well, you guys can go together. I mean, seriously.
Oh, yeah, we can do that, I guess. Or does that constitute a meeting?
No.
Does that constitute a meeting? Uh, we'll figure it out. We'll figure it out.
Announce his attendance. So you guys have been already, so.
Alright.
Great.
Appreciate it. Alright.
I got frightened enough with the door locking sound.
You get frightened, like scared straight?
Yeah, the door, the door, when that door closes, you know that you're not in control anymore.
Commissioner, they'll let you out at the end of the day.
Oh, thank you. That's good. I hope they give me water in between.
Who's story was that? That was Christian.
Okay.
Boils, yeah, yeah, okay. Alright, what else you got, Superintendent Henry?
I made that.
That's it.
Okay. Alright, I'm gonna go to Jude Gates.
Good morning, everyone. Oswalt and Facilities, nothing new to report. I sent you a little briefing yesterday just to kind of catch you up. The only thing I didn't note is last week when we had some RFPs come in, we had put out for that wall removal over in delegation. They really want to expand the size of their um comments with zero bids. So, zero. We've put it back out again. One of the gentlemen who had attended the site visit, um, cause you know, we called around and said, what happened? He said he ran out of time. So we put it back out, we're we're sending it, you know, far and wide, just like we did last time, and given it kind of a little bit longer of a timeframe, hopefully we'll get some quotes this time. The electrical upgrade is done and we're getting ready to put out the RFP for the um AC splits for the delegation building. So things are coming along.
Yeah, the good news is that's not like a present issue. We need to get to that.
Yep, for sure.
Alright, very good. Uh, yeah. Um, okay, you know, I don't see anybody else on Zoom. I'm there, Chuck Nicholson.
Uh, as was mentioned, uh, from last night's public hearing and in subsequent executive committee meeting, no changes to the budget. So we go on to the next meeting, the delegation full meeting in two weeks. So Wednesday evening um at six P M, it'll be preceded by a half hour executive committee meeting at which these four transfers approved by the B O C, thank you, will be presented and hopefully approved by the executive committee.
Okay.
Um, grants as usual is always a continuous thing. Uh, Moose Plate Grant is coming up next, so Rob and I will be working on that to, because the deadline for the application is June twenty second on that. Um, so probably Thursday prior, there'll be, you know, some uh grant application documents for the Moose Plate Grant. Um, so that's the one that we're archiving more of the inmate records, um resident records, and we're getting on to announce some of the financial commissioners records and backlog. Um, so a nice uh nice variety. Um, unfortunately, on the grant side, um, the grant writer candidate that we had selected unfortunately turned down our offer after much thought. So we're reaching out to the um, the second, um, you know, the other finalists for the position who was also an excellent, would, you know, is an excellent choice as well.
Okay.
So um, Autumn and H R are working on that. So hopefully we're good news on that in the future. Um, just, I think I briefly mentioned it last week, but we will be having a year-end workshop. Um, so it'll be a meeting invite coming hopefully even today, and we'll also include with that like a year-end summary document like we normally do that has you know, compacted things as far as what what are key dates and things like that. And then we'll also include um, the PowerPoint that we'll over as well at the actual meeting, which will will be partly by Zoom and partly we're teams and and partly in person too.
Right.
So, and just lots of things going on.
The DOJ grant?
Yes, so I think Catherine might have better information on that when that when that might be coming, but at least uh the accounts are set up.
Yeah.
Um, you completed yours and.
I'm just nervous to get it's a tight deadline and I don't wanna I don't wanna lose anything if we miss a deadline.
Yeah, I don't know exactly when they'll pop in as far as um the agreement itself with the dog heads themselves that would require logging in to just grants. But it's a quick sign off.
Alright, and so Catherine Catherine Mann is monitoring that, right?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Thanks, Catherine. I feel better already. Uh, what else you got, Chuck?
Um, payroll was a bit difficult this last time.
Okay.
But there's lots of things uh coming late, lots of things is yeah, sometimes when there's a holiday, this is holidays are very kind of difficult with the prior system, they're even more difficult with the current system.
Right.
As far as anti-sent even cool policies, it's just more difficult to get any stuff to work.
Well, thanks for watching that. From Gonzota, Allison.
Hello, um, I was away from the office for a few days and a hundred degree weather that was also like a hundred degree humidity. Uh, that was is this brutal, but it was a great summit. It was a women's summit. It was held by U K G. There was a hundred uh women from all across the country. It was a very diverse crowd and it was really exceptional. So I'm very thankful. Austin, Texas. So I'm thankful that uh I really appreciate you allowing me to attend that. It was uh kind of invigorates you and it opens your eyes up to different opportunities and stuff to think, to think through. Open enrollment, um, we have a hundred and seventeen enrollments still to come. Um, the departments I'm most worried about are um our county attorney's department. Um, very heavy on the Department of Corrections. Um, as of Tuesday night, there were over fifty-five. That's most of your COs. Uh, we need to get those in. Um, the sheriff's office had about thirteen openings still from staff that hadn't completed it. So I'm hoping they're on their way. And I also have a number of uh nursing home employees that have not even started it. So I'm just flagging those. And Jude Gates' office, um, most of your staff had not done it, your online staff. So if you can kind of tie them to a kiosk or have them start marching over to the H R office, we will log them in and just have them, you know, go through it real quick. And I know we're more than happy to help them. It's just sometimes they need a little bit of guidance on my pressing the right button. Is this what I really am supposed to be doing? Um, we're there to help them and we want to get everybody through. Um, it's on the tenth, the system shuts off and locks. So between now and Friday, um, today and tomorrow, whatever, we're there and send them along.
Can I just interrupt you real quick? I just wanna say for the department heads, please, 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 um, your employees, this is important because every year that I've been here uh for the three years, we always have somebody coming late. And it just makes extra work for everybody. So if department heads could just please ask that people to to get on this and help Allison out here, that'd be much appreciated.
Um, retire. So I had.
Can I just say that real quick? Uh, so just to know for the jail, we have put it out every single briefing. We have told superiors to relieve these people. Uh, we keep hammering every day. So whoever doesn't finish, doesn't finish because we've offered them time to go. We've offered a briefing. We've we've told them that they have to get this done. So whoever doesn't finish it, they're locked out, they're locked out. We've we've been trying very hard.
And we're this, we're the same way over here. We have about thirteen, I think, right? And we've emailed them, called them, so they're all helps.
Alright, because they come to us commissioners for the exception, and we've, we haven't turned anybody down, but you know, there may come a day where we just say, we're not doing it.
What's the consequence if people don't sign up?
So they will, um, I I think we said this was the year we're not gonna do any exceptions because we're in this platform, four and a half, going on our fifth year now. I mean, they've been, they were mailed in, it's on the tile of the UK, their time and attendance. So they will be locked into whatever they have for insurance now, meaning if they have a, you know, the high deductible plan, they're on that. If they change the O I P plan, they can't, you know, if they wanted to, they can't. For buyout, if they don't get the form in um into us on Friday afternoon, then they would not get the buyout because they have to go into the platform select, you know, and say they're not changing anything. And if um they don't have the insurance, they still have to do the manual paper buyout form. And we've had those out everywhere. So um, I'm hoping there's gonna be a real big push today to get people to do it. Um, and send them over.
Okay.
Because there's no excuse. We're twenty-four seven. This is a twenty-four seven thing. If their insurance is that important to them, then they should be doing their insurance.
Do you have time for me to come over and get a little assistance today?
Yes, you can. Yes.
Thank you. I will be there.
We will get you through it. It may not be me, but one of the other staff, I'm more than happy. It really, it literally takes no more than ten minutes when you're in the system because you can now see it's mirrored. You can see where your insurance is, and then you see where you can be on the new insurance, whatever insurance you want. And if you're not changing, you're hitting no, and then you just go back down. And it's like ten minutes is tops on it. So it's really a good platform.
Maybe we have to give them like a free Ben and Jerry's.
Hey, whatever it take. Uh, anyway, the retiree meetings is today. Um, we had one on Tuesday. It went very well for those that, you know, we had signups, but more people showed up, which is always the 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 nice thing about our retirees. They were pleased to walk away with a little swan bag. They were happy when they left as well. Um, and then the N H A C awards, I'm really pumping that. No, I checked my email. I haven't received anything from any department heads on about anybody that you're looking to nominate. Please get those over to me. Oh, I see a hand up. Yay.
I I did, I did online and sent it in.
Alright, you gotta send it over to me as well, please.
The N H A C recommendations?
Yes.
When's the, sorry?
Um, I I don't have the date. It's coming out.
No, no, the deadline for the, yes, that's what we need to make.
I'll get that back out to everyone. But please, if you are submitting, you need to send that over to me as well, please. Um, because I will be addressing that with the board and non-public on who uh is going forward. So if uh it looks like maybe Elaine's had her hand up too from that. That's great. Just please send those over to me as well, so I know. But I'm looking for every department to submit somebody. Thank you. I think that is it. Um, open enrollment, N H A C, U K G, retiree, and thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Um, Leila, what do we have?
I have nothing to report today.
Nothing? Alright. Alright, so I think that wraps up to department heads here. Um, we have new business, old business? We have a water.
Yeah, yes. I just defined.
By my phone.
No, it is not. It seems like this was.
Came in yesterday.
Yeah, exactly. And they have strict timelines. So uh, this is only because we're at the mercy of uh T D Finance. So I move to approve that the three-year capital lease agreement dated June fifth, twenty twenty four with T D Equipment Finance Incorporated at an annual interest rate of five point zero six, option A, amortization with payments in advance and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Finance.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just that I think this is a pretty decent interest rate, given what inch where interest rates are right now. Um, nice work.
Yeah, that's why I do annual payments in advance because the first payment has no interest.
Right.
As well. And by doing annually, you have less of a month, you know, fees for doing monthly payments as well. So.
Very good.
Try to.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah.
Being so mindful.
Yeah, T D, I don't lie, but they gave a very short window on the um.
Cause they know rates are gonna drop.
Yeah, usually we get at least a few weeks. This was like.
Rates go good.
Get on the fifth deadline on the seventh.
It better drop.
Yeah.
Um, on on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Thank.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, we're on to public comment. Uh, anybody from the public wish to speak? I don't know. The person on the bottom left.
Mister.
If you're on a phone, we hit star nine, I believe, to to take off you. Uh, but this is an opportunity for the public to make any comments if they'd like. So I don't, I'm not hearing anything there. So um, okay, so we have non-publics?
I think yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna entertain a motion.
I move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety-one A call and three.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
I vote yes. Thank you, everybody. Ladies, hard work.
Thank you. I will start. I think we'll start with Allison. And Chuck.
Okay, we're coming out of non-public, Commissioner Coyle, this motion.
Uh, we had um three non-public sessions. I moved to see all the minutes indefinitely because um well, with respect to um, the, let's see, the first one, uh I think with respect to all of them, it could re render a proposed action ineffective and we don't have a finalized date.
Motion on floor and seconded. Uh, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle.
Yes.
And I vote yes.
With that, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn and seconded. We are adjourning.
Do you want me to do the payroll change?